Okay, let's call the regular Planning Commission meeting of February 21st to order at 7:00 PM. And we will rise for the pledge.
Pledge we should declare the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kevin will call please.
There we go. Patterson.
Here.
Farzak.
Here.
Patajazak.
Here.
Shaw. Grant.
Here.
Okay, so we need first the motion for the agenda, if everybody's looked that over. I make a motion to approve the February 21st, 2024 agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carries. And the approval of the meeting minutes for January 15th. You should all have.
Thank you.
I don't have a copy of the 15th. Are you going to be meeting on the 20th?
That shouldn't sound bad if you haven't got a copy.
Do you want to see it? I'm, I'm, we have it online, right?
It's online and.
That's okay, that's the one I looked at online. So as long as everybody's looked that over, I know I had no, no problems or issues with it.
I have a hard copy of it here.
We'll be fine. Thank you though. We'll need a motion for that as well. Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the January 15th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll take a minute for public comment before we move into the site review. Anybody have anything they want to add before that?
Yes. I'm Joe Jabara from Armada Township. And I was here to see about if you've received correspondence from what I, the last four letters we wrote to you in regards to, excuse me, doing a joint venture for grants. Has the commission received anything?
That would be something that's decided through council.
They said through you. It's actually through you to approve to the board.
If I can cut him quick, who's they?
Your board stated that. And also I spoke with Mike.
This is my board. Who on my board did you say?
Township, or village board. It was, um, yes, no. Dave?
Cohen.
Cohen? Stated that. And Michelle.
Dave and I have discussed that there would be some working together as far as the Planning Commission with us and the township, but the decision to actually attend the meetings has not been approved, no.
No, it wasn't, well, you already did attend the meeting. By invitation to. Correct. It was not a sanction, I buy both. It was the invitation and then, this was back in August of, now, the original letter went out in August 9th, to be exact, of last year for your consideration to see grants. And Mike.
Shaw.
Shaw stated he was on board with that. He, and he actually walked me through the park for some of that, but there's other assets or avenues we can explore. So I would like to see if you could make a motion, whether you'd be, be willing to work with us, or if you don't want to, that's fine. You know, refusal, because I have to, you know, keep going with what we have, stay the course on that. So it'd be a lot easier.
To make a motion this evening? No, that would not happen. I would have to get with Dave and see exactly how the village wants to handle that.
Well, that would be board to board. Your board to your village board, technically, if you want to be PC here. But that's up to you guys, but I do wanted, I do want to make it a point to see if you received any of the letters that I wrote.
I know that there were a couple that were given to me from the village clerk, but as far as making any decisions on how we're going to handle those meetings, no, nothing has been discussed.
And may I ask you, what would be the turnaround time for a decision? Could we do, get that done before or for the next meeting?
Which your meeting is when?
Your meeting.
Before my next meeting, yes.
Yeah, a decision one way or the other.
Absolutely.
I'm going to continue on with what we're doing. And as all of you guys know, it's, you have a lot more pull to do it as, you know, both township, or village and township.
Right.
And, you know, any input from you folks would be obviously an asset.
And when is your next meeting?
It is next, second, uh, first week of next month. It's going to be before yours.
Okay.
The village. But even if you can do something prior to that, that would be actually a benefit for me, because logistically I have to get.
No, our answer to you will come beforehand. I was just.
Great, great.
Trying to, to see if I could get someone to come to your actual meeting, but if your meeting is before ours.
Yes ma'am, it is.
We'll, we'll make the discussions over the phone rather than at the meeting.
That's great. I, I mean, obviously. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Does In and Al, do you guys know what this is all about?
No.
Nope. I was going to ask you after.
I think the explanation for the rest of your board might be in order, because they don't even understand why Joe's here.
I know, but give them a speed.
Basically, it's a, it's a letter of intent to, sorry, it's a letter of intent to, for us to go after grants to, you know, better the community, frankly. Let's get to the point here. And with us working together, we have more pull, because we meet certain criteria of what the federal and state want. And it has nothing to do with anything else that is going on. This is totally our Planning Commission reaching out to you guys, your commission, just to make that clear. Any kind of road improvements, if we can do that, infrastructure, you know, that's why we'd like to pick your brains here, to see what, you know, you guys might even come up with something we didn't even think of.
So just certain criteria just looks better for both to be attended.
Um, actually, yes. And it, and it, you meet more, you know, we have more, I guess, reach.
Check more boxes.
Basically, to be exact. So yes. That's basically it. I mean, to get into more detail, you know, it would be, sure, go ahead.
Do you have specific grants in mind, or this is just a broad collaboration intent?
Well, that's what we've been waiting on you guys to see, because it dictates which ones we go for. Obviously, we're going to utilize, sorry, go ahead. We're going to utilize SEMCOG for some of them, because we both are affiliated with them. And others, there's, you know, there's a group of grants that we can go after, so, so to answer your question, yes. I don't know exactly which ones we're going to do right now.
So it'd be on a grant by grant basis?
Um, correct. And I'm going to pick, see if they can pick like a more broader kind of spectrum of what we can, you know, go after. I spoke with a couple folks here in Lansing, and they're willing to direct us, but we have to make that decision between our commissions. But yes, to your point. And the other debacle is, we have a deadline that we have to be in by, which you all know. And I believe some start in June. And so to get all the moving parts together, I'd like to see if we can get going on that. And, and I, and that's fine. And if you folks don't want to do it, that's fine too. I understand that. But be a lot better with us.
To be really clear, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Say the township planning and Armada Planning, village planning, find a project that you want to do. You on your own don't approve that project. You can submit that project to your respective boards. They will approve the project and you can go see from there. So you don't commit the village to a $500,000 grant that we have to have a 50% or a 20% match, so.
And that's correct. I mean, obviously, the process is not going to change. They have to deal with it before, you know, we get to work on it. But we recommend to the board, as she stated, as Joe said it, and then we go from there. If they say, okay, we don't want to deal with it, then we go on to the next grant. But to get in to apply, you have to apply first to get anything, which this is no new. But yes, thanks.
I just did it because I was.
Right, right. No, no, that's, and you're more than welcome to talk to Mike. He can probably shed some more light on what we talked about.
Well, Mike won't be back until April, so I think we need to make some type of decision.
Well, maybe, yeah, if you had a phone call to him. I'm going to call him, so I don't.
I'll go see him.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good to hear.
I do what I can do.
I'll drive with her, help her drive down. Thanks for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming to the meeting.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Okay, we will now move into site plan review for the Franklin Street Land Management Corp. Mr. Fritz, you want to?
Yeah, I, I can address the, some of the issues, okay.
Okay.
Well, McKenna had obviously most of the issues and so on and so forth. And they're not in chronological order, because as I enter my time of the brain here, I type them, or I can't type, I talk to them. But anyway, one of them was a park there, you know, there's a little park there and so on, and what do you plan on doing with it? Well, I really had, never had a real idea. One of the thoughts that crossed my mind was maybe a, like a sale on, a rest series on a highway of, you know, a covered building with a couple barbecue pits out there and not a big deal. But after I started thinking it through a little deeper, maybe I need a restroom. In other words, this could be something that I would, it would probably be one of those things, you know, usually on a project like this, I'd use a focus group, you know, usually eight people or no more than 12, obviously. And would you pay an extra $1,000 and a half, something like this in a neighborhood? Or would you just want a landscape? You know, I was thinking about, could we even change the name to Big Oak, Big Oak Park or something like that, because that big oak tree that that's a pretty rough looking big oak tree, but anyway.
It's an old tree, yes it is.
So that, I haven't really addressed. And then it was something about a road and so on and so forth. So we'll just go these. So that one there is whatever, I have nothing to suppose. The next thing would be the tree thing, the tree ordinance, okay? And I'll just read on, thinking about here. There will be a tree plant in every lot, okay? If anybody went over to the, the one in Romeo, you know, the behind the W hall.
Yep.
Every lot there has a tree on it. Some of them have died over the years, some died right away because they don't water them. It's amazing they do die. But they, it's in the ordinance though, that if one does die or something, it's, that owner's responsibility to plant something. Okay? The biggest thing I, I was looking for the other day, is that thing's about 30 years old now, some of those trees. And what I was, I just want to make sure that when you do these things, these trees can't be 90-foot trees and stuff like that, okay? And it looks like, I don't think there's anything out there that would be so large that it would be a problem, okay? We do submit a, there obviously there would be a plan, a, uh, S E S C O, oh, okay, anyway, there would be a landscape plan submitted to the village, because I got to get one. I got to know what these things are going to cost. So, and it's usually not too elaborate, but one thing I, and as you can see in Romeo, if you look through that project real well, I wasn't real tough on people what they wanted to do. I mean, as you over there, there's a lot of, every house looks a little different. So I don't want to discourage something like that. Okay, so you get the bare minimum, a couple bushes and stuff like that, and a tree in the front. And if you want to do more, that's great. Apparently about 95% of people did more. Some, one of them did too much more and we had to talk to them a little bit. But other than that, that's how that's handled. There is another interesting thing here. They put how, the planner said that we should be responsible for the trees. The reason that note was on this, on the thing was because your zoning section F calls for money to put in escrow and the village would plant the trees. Now, if you want to do that, I'm all for it. I don't have a problem there. But that was what your zoning had. Okay, so there's a, I don't know, but it's F, it's in there somewhere, but it's under F. And it does say that we would put escrow money up for the trees and so on and so forth. But once again, I got to get the landscape plan, find out what kind of trees and so on and so forth. So that is something we positively do. The next thing is hooking to the end of the sewer line on the end of Franklin Street, okay? This may or may not be possible. Even if the geography plan allows it, the problem being, can we bore under the water line to get to it? It would be something that needs to be engineered and will be addressed, obviously, when we do more engineering. Okay? So that, that I can't really answer right now, because I just don't have that type of thing yet. Something that was in there, something about a 60-foot easement? To a street, for a street?
I think that was.
What's that all about?
For a street or for the Orchard Trail?
Pardon?
Yeah. No, that's in Row's letter. They said there is a plan, and we had noted it too, but there in the master plan, it says there should be a street connection to Franklin Lane.
I don't, I don't think that could even happen. I don't know.
And that's, that's to the west. I don't know, but.
Was that the one for construction access?
Pardon?
Was that the road for construction access?
No, 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 it had nothing to do with that. It was just on the whole Lathrop Street or something, I don't think. I never, I've never even heard of that at all.
They're saying there's a, a plan to connect Lathrop to Franklin Lane with a 60-foot public street easement. 60 foot must be the engineering standard for a minimum easement width, I'm guessing?
I, I can't imagine something like that's ever going to happen. I mean, I don't, because you got your D B W, you got all that kind of, you got the well site and stuff there. That was just something that, but it was on that list anyway, so I don't have any clue what's, what that's all about. Okay, let's see. Okay, the next, one of the other things that showed up there was house plans. One of the plans, obviously, house plans will come into play. One of the, there would be two ranch models I can indicate on the letter when I applied for the permit. And one of them will be that, one with the wrapped round porch, that's over there in the sub. There's quite a few. In fact, probably every house in there could have been that house. Okay, I had to build some other spec houses and so on and so forth, but that would have been a pretty popular plan. So I'm not going to mess with that. I'm making a little bit of it, because I, like I said before, I lived in, I lived over there twice, okay? And the garage is a little small. And so I made them deeper, so that, and I said that in my letter, that you could put a refrigerator in front. Just, I guess when you live there yourself, you don't have, you're just, okay. So anyway, that'll be, and then the other, the other plan, the other ranch plan, I got an idea of what I want to do there. It would be just a little bit larger, maybe another 80 feet or something like that. And then I would have one raised ranch. I don't have any colonials figured at this particular stage. I don't think I want to get into that. I want to get 31 lots anyway. And it would be a raised ranch, which simply means it would be a bedroom on the first floor, and then you nestle something on the, you know, like, you know, be a Cape Cod, more or less type of thing. But the master bedroom is on the first floor. And I'll have the old at least sketches for you, when, you know, when I bring this, when I bring it back again. Street lighting, okay, there was some mention about street lighting. Well, I don't know if any of you folks are over there in the evening or not, but how the street light is handled usually in projects like this, and definitely that one, was every garage has two, two lights, one on each side of the door. It's not a photocell on, you know, on a desk while it's going. And it's up to, it's in the condo docs, and it's up to the individual, make sure they stay on it. You know, if the light burns out or the photocell doesn't work for some day, I don't think. So the street is always, you don't have a great big old street light somewhere in the street. In fact, I did a project once. I put street lights in and they asked them to be turned off. But anyway, that was a large project.
So you're saying all the lighting will be for the garage?
Pardon?
The garage will, people's garages will provide all the lighting?
All, all garages are in front of the house.
So no additional streetlights, just the garage?
Just the garage lights. And if you go over there, it does a nice job. And you don't have anybody whining about, oh, light in my yard type of thing. So basically, and that's how that's handled, makes for a nice thing. And then you don't have to really worry about, you know, things breaking down, because the worst that can happen, a light bulb goes out, or even a photocell doesn't make it. Okay, now, then, the big deals here, let's start, let's start with, and then there was another, the, okay, well, I'll finish. There was one more thing. Row had something, but that wasn't much. The only stick, sticking point that might be a second connection to the water main, but that can be addressed when we get to final engineering. But let's go to the big problem here. I don't mind spending money to find out if these, these are severe issues. There's some issues, there's some engineering issues I have. There's issues that have to be addressed. I thought most of them out and so on, and of course, once I get a geography map and this and that, and one thing and other done, I can tell better about what, you know, if they can be, how they can be worked out and so on. But the big thing is, I don't mind spending money to do all this, obviously, I got to do it anyway. But at this particular stage, I don't want to do it because the 20% deal about open space, okay? If I were to do something like that, and especially in the center of the unit, like it calls, like I mentioned, I'd lose seven to nine lots. It's an if that I can even do it on 31 lots. So there's no way I'm going to lose any lots. Like, I just can't. And to give you an idea, even if I took the lot that's at the end of the street, that little tiny one in the park, I'd lose the first six, if they said, well, gee, why don't you just move it there? I'd lose the first six houses. That's one of the best, that, that can't happen. I'm already a tight thing. This project has to go pretty much the way I planned, you know, the way that's been submitted. Okay? Because there's just no room for any, in fact, there's no room for any real major problems if I find something that comes up, okay? So that would be that. The project, basically, the ten, the, the density isn't really a problem, okay? Because if, even without the, the 10%, we'd positively do it. I'm only about 400 square feet if you take the site and take away the streets and stuff like that, and you do all this, she called it a lateral plan or whatever the case is. But basically, the 31 lots have to, I mean, that has to be, I think, oh, did anybody ever look it up? I asked Becky, I think it was. I think, I think that property still is unmodable.
The official zoning map has it as.
I know the zoning map says, but I never, I could not find anywhere that was ever, because it was, I know it was unmodable when I bought it. That's, that's retention pond, very clear. In fact, I think I gave them a copy of the zoning, of the, of the map when I submitted this. But anyway, that's really a new point. The project's a project. Either you want it or you don't want it. You know what I mean? It's, that's just, just the way that it is. But I don't know, because you do have that in there. So I guess, how do we address the 20% thing? Because that is the deal killer. So I don't know if it's a simple case. Usually, it's a simple case if you got this, that's the problem, that's the sticking point. You can go to the ZBA, that, I've done that before. I don't know how, how exactly you're, you got a PD, but that's, the PD that's, that's there, that's on your books. That is so rigid and out of place from anything I've ever seen before that that could, that could almost be a taking. Because there's no way I could, I can follow that particular 20% and this type of thing unless I really get some serious density in there. Okay? But, but this is a project that worked very well in Romeo, and you will have to go and buy it, you can see what it looks like. I think the streets were put in in 94 or 95. I think the first house got finished in 95, 96. I think the project started in 94. So that's 28, 29 years old. So you can see what it looks like after that particular period of time. But there's nothing like this in the village that I'm aware of. And, and so anyway, that's, that's pretty much it. I did do, to give you an idea, I put on there roughly, we hope to do it in a mid 300 range. Unfortunately, I think I was smoking something that day. I think what I want to do is going to be a little more than that, okay? The project probably would end up being between 12 and 15 million dollars. That would be the project. Because this is probably going to average, if you have extras of finished basements and things like that, the average house is probably going to run, probably run over 12 or over 400. But it'd be at least in the, the base house would probably be in the upper threes. It's, and of course, you've got taxes and water and sewer income and stuff. I don't know what that's going to generate. The capital fees, I don't have, I don't, the tap fees, I do that when I build it, but the capital fees are running about $200,000 for city and water. So that's $200,000 right there. So basically, the only really sticking point that I, that I'm aware of until I dig deeper, would be what do we do about the 20%?
Jeff, when you're talking to 20%.
Pardon?
When you're talking about the 20%, you're talking about the ratio, the lot to the building size?
Well, what, what, what the zoning calls for is an open space of 20% of the project.
Right.
So if there's seven acres there, that's roughly five and a half acres that's usable, okay? Usually, when they figure the density, they do eliminate the streets, okay? Then after you eliminate the streets, then you use 20%. Anyway, whatever it is, looking at the, like I said before, if I did 20% of the project, of the land mass of the project, you lose six right on that one end of the street. And if they put it in the center, now I got to work around it? I never even drew up a plan for that, because it would be seven to nine units. And if I'm struggling with 31, so, and do, how do we get around that?
Brian, you got anything for that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to do some rough math here, real quick.
Brian is with us from McKenna, the planners.
Pardon?
Brian is from McKenna, the planners.
Oh, okay.
And he's here tonight to help us address all these issues.
Yeah, actually, the big issue is the 20% deal. The rest of the stuff is all pretty much standard stuff you run across.
So the, that 20% plays with, you mentioned, you called it the lateral plan. It's a zoning plan is really what it's intended to be. A lot of people call it the parallel plan, but it's, how many lots can you lay out with the existing zoning dimensions? So 80 to 400 square foot lots. You mentioned the, the area of the usable space on the lot minus the detention areas, seven or seven and a half, I forget.
About seven acres.
Something like that. And for just rough calculations, I took 80% of that and see that we might be able to fit, like, best case scenario, 29 lots, which is using every possible. And, and that's, that's if you get a really rectilinear road pattern and things like that, so it's not realistic.
Let me tell you a little something. I did submit a, it was, it was Ross, okay? And said, can you get more density? So I said, okay, fine, that's an interesting question. So I did the duplex things, okay? So I'm all. So, I'm all proud of myself, I got these duplexes and, and actually, all I did was put together some of these individual ones I'm gonna use anyway. Okay? By the time I got all done and how it could possibly make something like this work. It was the one that cost me almost, don't get me wrong, if I need to lift pump or upgrade a system, that's the, whether I got three thousand units or three units, so that's all the signal pay. But, I'm thinking. The only money I would've saved if they were duplexes would be a couple thousand bucks a unit or four thousand dollars, because I, I had single loaded streets. The scour of the streets doubled, and I only had eleven extra units. I'm thinking.
Doesn't pencil out that way.
Yeah, I, I don't know why I spent all that time burning up my brain trying to figure. How to get more density using a two-car garage, now, if you don't wanna put a garage on it, just. You know, just build individual units, you know, sixplexes, eightplexes, whatever, because I got a lot of fits like that in Romeo too, if you wanted to take a look at them. Uh, I've got an eighty-eight unit, uh, where it was twenty-two fourplexes and, it was all kind of, well, you know, you do it for a living. And, but, to get that the way that it is, you know, where I don't have the zigzags, I got the curves, I don't have a straight line. That's, but yet, I only got one-way street, I only got about eight hundred feet of street in there.
I think the, the street layout is probably the only way you can make something like this happen, how you have it. Right, there's not a lot of creativity you can have with that, I, I agree. Um, but the, so, the complication is, the ordnance, the only mechanism in the village's ordinance to have an increase in density is the PD. So, I don't think that there's a way around the twenty percent of this space. But what the PD does let you do is shrink the lot sizes further, which is beneficial. You know, on, on the list of lot sizes that you have here, a fair amount of them are. Just over six thousand, you have some in the high five thousands, and then the bigger ones in the back are fourteen thousand, eleven thousand. So, the plan development option's really the only thing we, we can do if you want to request anything above that parallel plan, that zoning thing.
Then you do, then you run the zoning.
I'm sorry?
Then you go through the zoning, the, you know, the, uh, not the zoning, but, um.
The ZBA.
The ZBA for lot sizes?
Well, not the lot sizes so much, it's a twenty percent that's a pillar. Because the lot sizes are, uh, if you use the ten percent, the, the, that's the zero, the density is not really the problem, the problem. Well, it's a problem if I gotta put twenty percent in.
Well, the density is, the density is going to be a problem, I think, because you're, even the plan development option gives you just ten percent density limits. That's as high as they can go, so, and that goes back to that zoning plan, so if your zoning plan shows you can fit twenty lots on there. The plan development option, the best you can do is twenty-two lots.
Okay.
Okay, so. I'm looking at it and, now, we don't have the zoning plan, so this is just a guess, I mean, it's probably somewhere between twenty and twenty-five is what the zoning plan will show.
And you're, you're right about it, I know with the, the shrinkage would be. A minimum, a minimum of six lots, but I, I can't take any shrinkage, okay, so the problem would be, and I don't, you don't have contract zoning. I don't think that's part of any of the zoning plans you have, you know, there's contract zoning, the state of Michigan has that. I personally haven't had to use it though, because PUDs, plan unit developments, in communities have really a lot of. Lot of give and take, this one has no give and take. Okay, so, basically, it, do we work around it, or do I just, uh, forget that, I mean, I've been in here, I'm calling around for twenty years. And now that I'm over eighty, my brother's over eighty, and we own this thing, I don't got twenty more, well, hey, if I got twenty more years, that would be great, but I can't hardly hear now. Forgot my hearing aids, luckily that.
Well, so to answer your question, there's a section in the ordinance that says, section twenty-point-one-three appeals, and it says, the ZBA shall have no authority in matters covered by the PD. Section of the ordinance, so.
That, you're, you're absolutely correct, so, the ordinance, well, anyway, I'm gonna tell you what's, you know, the, the thing, they can't work, okay? So, somewhere along the line, there, if I wanna pursue this, and I'm not necessarily saying I wanna pursue this. Uh, would be, you could always adopt the contract zoning, you know, the state of Michigan has, is what they call contract zoning, I don't know if you're familiar with that or not. But this community doesn't have that zoning in there, so they have to adopt that. The next question I don't know, and I should know, I gotta put it out, if that is still zone multiple, would it work?
Joe, do you know? I, I don't know that that's zone multiple there.
When I bought the property in nineteen-seventy-three, okay, and when I did phase one, did say, in fact, Fitzbridge was the, uh, the engineer and more or less the planner. And you had a zoning map, I've got the zoning map, in fact, I got, uh. Well, I think I gave it to you guys. Like, anyway, I submitted it, the nineteen-seventy. Let's see, it had a new zoning plan in nineteen, maybe nineteen-seventy, I bought the property in seventy-three. And a couple of years before the property, there was, you know, they had their upgrade with the zoning and so on and so forth, okay, and it, and it had the zoning map. And I gave that to Becky, uh, I should've brought a copy, I, it stood in my mind. But if you look back in the nineteen-seventies or whatever, it was positively zone multiple. And you gotta remember, back in seventy-three, the railroad ran through that thing. And probably before they rezoned it multiple, it was probably either industrial or at least commercial. Because, you know, because that was active.
Could've been some kinda hackback.
Consequently, there'd be no reason to, to change it anyway, but that's what it was, and a designer zoning map. Is on the engineering plans I have, Fitzbridge, as I can see, he shows it there, in fact. If you look at the original layout, there was supposed to be more multiple, uh, in where phase three is. There was, uh. When we bought the property, though, we did not have access to Main Street. That came after we bought it. And I, in fact, you guys, when I say you guys, the village, uh, um, Brown, Ray Brown. I think it was his name, uh, he's the one that said, well, let's try and get that, and anyway, he's the guy that actually set me up with the people that owned that. We had a meeting at City Hall here, and I ended up buying it, and one of them was the, and I tore down the Cat Lady's house, I don't know if anybody remembered the Cat Lady?
Yeah.
Remember the Cat, the Cat Lady? And every, so I got a pat on the back for doing that, okay, so I was a good guy. But, uh, but anyway, I just, somehow, if you want the project, we have to work to get around, I mean, I gotta have thirty-one lots. So, if we didn't, like I said, I don't know what to do, I mean, I, I don't know if I'm in a position where I really wanna even go to court, I mean, I just. That's not something I really wanna do, I just soon build a house on and call it a day.
Well, so, one thing that the plan development gives a lot of flexibility on are things like, um, lot sizes and street layouts. So, you have an opportunity to maybe shrink the lots, decrease the infrastructure costs by shorter roads, less water main, less sewer main, those sorts of things. Kinda shrink the development footprint and make that cost lower so you don't have to get thirty-one lots, right? I mean, there, there's some back and forth and some creativity that that gives on the village's side.
You, you've seen that layout, that's gonna be tough, that's gonna be tough, I, I've spent a lot of time on trying, just like when I went with the increase, okay? It was tough to do, I mean, I, you can't be any more fugal or any more, I mean, it's just, it's a minimal amount of road I could humanly put in there. And you can see that from the layout, in fact, it just said it was, nice job, so.
I'm suggesting there's an opportunity to go smaller lots and shrink the road farther as, as a potential option. Which I don't know what, how big your building footprints are, but.
Uh, they're, uh, they're thirty-six feet, the, the footprints here are thirty-six and a half, and what's that? The buildings, all buildings, the axle width is thirty-six feet, the ranches are sixty feet deep. And, uh, the two-story is forty-eight feet, because I got some pretty, there's some lots that you can't put a very big house up, you know, they'll have to go up, you know, there's some only. Fifty-foot deep lots or fifty-five foot deep. And when you really, really scrutinize the thing. You know, I.
I. You know, I, I think that. I think it's difficult, I think thirty-one isn't something that's approvable under any of the ordinances that the village.
Absolutely, absolutely, so what, what can we do about it?
The thing that I don't know is how many, I've not looked into it, so I can't tell you how many, um, units I think you could get on there. If it were RM zoning, if it were multiple zoning, I, I don't know how many lots you could get on there. If we were to go down the route of conditional rezoning, that would be the one, one way to go.
Well, that's why I asked, if, 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 did anybody do the investigation?
It's single, single family, it's our one.
But, if it is, when did this happen?
I believe the map we have from McKenna says oh-two.
And it could've been before that too.
Right, well, it says, it doesn't say effective. It hasn't been done there.
One-one-three, I think.
Well, I, I've been, I've been down this road before where the zoning map didn't match the zoning. Okay, and, when you change the zoning, you just can't change the zoning map. I mean, you can if you want to, but it doesn't change the zoning, you have to, I'm talking about from a legal end and type of thing, in other words, you gotta have a. If you're gonna change the zoning of a piece of property or an area in town or this type of thing, there has to be minute, I mean, it's, you send out the notices and all, and all that kinda stuff. And, I don't have any record of that. I do, to change the subject, I do have something, when I run across spending my, instead of counting sheep, I do this, you know, so, but. Um, anyway, uh, one of the articles, I keep everything, obviously, and it said, this, this was an article about the voters approved of bond issue for sewers and stuff like that. And that was back in eighty-six, okay? And, uh, but something else on here was, Bill's deputy clerk will, will resign in December, okay? The position pays seven-fifty an hour for a forty-hour week, is that price, is that pay's gone up, has that gone up at all? So in nineteen-eighty-six, where was the charts in this place, was getting seven, what was that?
Seven-fifty.
Oh, uh, no, you know what, I think I need glasses, it might be seven-thirty. Anyway, just to let you know that, uh, I do keep an eye on some of this stuff, and I, I could not find anywhere where there's anything like that. The only thing that came up, and if anybody can remember, uh, a, a, a big thing that hit this project was the, uh. Was when you, all villages, most villages are, um, what do they call it, zoning, you know? When you zone, when you put the villages together back in the eighteen hundreds and so on and so forth, there was, uh. Uh, that's a.
Master plan.
What?
Planned it out, master planned.
No, 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 it was, it was a certain type of zoning.
Euclidean.
What, come on, you, you remember, what?
Euclidean zoning.
Well, anyway, whatever it was, this is how they did it, okay? Well, when this, when phase three, I'd already had houses in, I'd already submit, submit, I had stuff to the state. It came back with some minor changes, and I sent it back again. About the next day or so after I sent it back, some court ruling came down, indicated I couldn't replat, assessors plat. I couldn't replat, I had to replat it, assessors plat, I couldn't just. Well, that means I have to send out thirty notices to everybody within, and I already had, I think, nine houses under construction. Luckily, uh, there, or unfortunately, there was only, I could only close four of the nine because. Even though it was four pieces of property, only two were on. You know, and like, one, and like, I could move them around a little bit, okay, but anyhow, they even had to sign a plat. So, I don't know if you, if you go, I don't know how far back you go, but.
Not quite that far.
But anyway, it was an absolute nightmare, and it held up the project, obviously, because I gotta start from the beginning, and I'm already ready to go. Yeah. But anyway.
So, so the historical zoning, I think, is a, a different question, and if there's, you said you have an old map or something like that, I think. You know, you could certainly go through and present that evidence and, really, the village would have to go through and vet that information, but. Um, looking forward, uh, one of the main criteria that the village would be required to look at if they were to consider a conditional rezoning. Is, what does the future land use plan say for the property? And I pulled up the master plan from twenty-twelve, we just found that out, um, we'll be going through an update, but the twenty-twelve master plan has this property as single-family residential. I don't know what the previous future land use map said, but it seems to me that it's been the intent for, at least since twenty-twelve. To have this continue to be single-family residential. I think it's difficult sledding to prove that it's our, that it's the village's intent to go multiple on this. And especially, the hard thing for me, just as a general planning concept, is, this is in the back of single-family residential, right? To get to your property, you've gotta go through an existing neighborhood, um, there's not direct access to it, so putting. High density at that location impacts every one of the neighbors through the, through that area.
Well, this, that is a super plan, I mean, because the, uh. The, the, what these houses are gonna go for is gonna be, you know, quite a bit higher than what the house I'd resale on in the, in the neighborhood, obviously, okay? Probably an average of, I would have to think maybe it's close to a hundred thousand dollars a unit. And if that's the case, you're, you're upgrading the whole area, really, and not only that, it's basically transitional zoning anyway, because you got, you got a trail on one side, DBW on it, and a swamp on the other. And it only backs up to seven residences.
It's a good spot, uh, it's a good spot, I mean, I think there's opportunities here, right, I, I put in that letter, you gotta connect to the trail. It's like, it's a no-brainer, you have beautiful trail access the whole way and, and no connection for anybody other than those couple residents that you have planned backing up to it. To me, swapping the park with one of the lots that has, uh, frontage on the trail makes a whole hell of a lot more sense. I think there are things that can be improved that you can sell as an amenity.
Well, that actually, to be perfectly frank, I, because I even called it the trail, you know, blah, 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 because I would. But I've done enough study since then, or there's different articles, the trail is not an asset, not a major asset. Uh, not everybody cares for it, they don't want people running through the place, uh, is it gonna be next to my house? Uh, if, and not only that, the city actually owns probably more along the trail than I do. You know, when it comes, when it comes, if you're looking for trail front, it's okay. Uh, I think the only thing maybe I would be receptive to, and I, and if I was a village, or I, I really wouldn't wanna see it. I could give access off that park area and run something down, you know, behind, beyond, on the village's property. But I like what's behind there, because you got all trees and stuff. Okay, and I don't, and, and I don't, if you live there, I don't think you want to run down on top of the sewer easement, that's the only thing that's clear back there. So that, those lots are pretty premium lots.
But what you're telling me about is, these are all new residents, right, so. Whoever's buying this is new or wants to purchase one of these lots, they know that they're moving next to the trail. And for the people who are gonna buy those lots, they wanna be by the trail, they're not gonna look at it and say, well, it's by the trail, I guess I'll buy it, but I'm gonna hate living there.
You know what, you know, I always get a kick out of you planners, man, because. But anyway, it, it's something that I wouldn't want, it's something that really isn't, if it was, believe me, I would've made it, in fact. Obviously, I called it the trail, which I, really, if I had to do it again, I'd probably call it Big Oak Meadows or some back and thing, okay? Because I do have that, the biggest tree in town back there. So, but anyway, that still doesn't alleviate the fact.
The, the density, the total number of units is your number one biggest barrier. And I don't, I don't see a way we get to thirty-one with the existing zoning and the parallel plan that.
Well, that was another, I mean, I did bring up the zoning, no, in other words. Legal, I mean, there's a certain process you do, when you, if you got a zoning map, that's one thing, because I remember the one, the one thing, I, I questioned the guy. Because I thought it was zoned one way, and so I go in there. because I thought it was zoned one way, and so I go in there to the, whoever was in charge of doing this. In fact, he got pretty belligerent with me. He said, I did this, and I know that's what it is. I said, are you sure that's what it is? Yep, 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 and I kept questioning him. And, no, he says, I personally did this, and blah, blah, blah. Well, so I go ahead and do, luckily, I didn't close, okay? But I did make an offer on it, and I, I was doing some of my homework, because I had time, I wouldn't have had the, I mean, the time to check into things. And, and I talked to the planner. Planner, I think that zone, I think it was residential, it was on the zoning map that showed multiple. But he thought it was zone residential. It turned out it did, that it was, okay? While the guy that, that owns the property now did end up doing duplexes, I mean, but he had it coming on for about five years ago.
You know, I don't know where we go from here in terms of, I mean, you're alleging that there, it isn't actually zoned R1, which I can't resolve. And we're not gonna resolve here tonight.
No, no, no.
So that's a much bigger conversation that, frankly, everything that I have shows that it's supposed to be single-family R1. I, I don't know how to get around that.
Well, I, I, I didn't realize why I'm here, obviously. And if there is something, and if, if it is already zoned R1, fine, if it isn't, and there are contract zoning, the worst that could maybe happen, the village could institute the contract zoning ordinance. That'd be a way around it.
Well, they could, but I, again, I go back to if they, if they choose to do a conditional rezoning or contract zoning, they're the same thing. Different terminology, same thing. They still have to have justification for doing that. And the justification is the master plan, the future land use plan for the, for the village. And the future land use plan says, no, we want this single family. So the planning commission and the village, in that regard, at least on that one topic, what do we want this to be in the future? If they consider a conditional rezoning to multiple, they're going against the future land use plan that they have adopted.
Well, like I say, I, I don't know that, I'm not, I haven't read the whole ordinance to that, this contract zoning, but this is a case where it's a contract, in other words, neither one, once, if, if I say, hey, you like this project, and everyone here says, I love the project, but I got this problem. Okay, well, they, they can, they can, you can work around that under contract zoning, but neither one of us can make a change. I mean, I can't go ahead and say, okay, I want thirty-five lots now, or you can't come back and say, I want twenty-five lots now.
Well, that's kinda what you are doing with a conditional rezoning that doesn't follow your plan.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that might be,
Then you're getting into a spot zoning request, where, hey, we're doing something for this individual homeowner that doesn't align with the plan that's been adopted.
Well,
And that's where the village gets into a problem. Now, if you wanna have a bigger discussion about, is that the right vision? Then the upcoming master plan process is the time to do that. But right now, the document of record says, we want a single family. And, and the planning commission and the, and the village council shouldn't make changes with that as the adopted vision for the, for it.
Okay, there's a big, the only question I have, the big question that maybe no one wants to answer, because it doesn't matter, but, is the village, or is the people here for it? Would they like to see this if there wasn't a hiccup? I mean, this is off the record, obviously, we're not voting on anything or nothing, but I mean,
The hiccup is what makes us not be able to make a decision.
Well, it's not, it's not a decision, it's this, it's this, because I, there's ways of probably making this happen, obviously, okay? But if this is something the village doesn't want, then I won't pursue it. If the village says, hey, we do want this, okay? Then I'll, there are, there's ways I can, there's things that can be done, but I'm not gonna go fight uphill. If you guys say, hey, uh, thanks for coming in, we're not interested in a couple hundred thousand dollars in tap fees or thirty-one units, or whatever the case is.
Well, but that, respectfully, that might be an unfair characterization, because all the documents, I don't mean to speak for you guys, I'm sorry, but all the documents say, we want single-family housing, so the product that you're proposing is good.
Is exactly what we want.
The, the general layout, fine, but the number of, just because you don't like the answer on the number of units, doesn't mean that they don't want the project.
Okay, then I would, well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a decision in the series, because I'm gonna, I, I really don't wanna spend, it's gonna take, you know, several thousand, I don't know how much money to, to see if the project is feasible for me. In other words, okay, I love it, I got thirty-one lots, you love it. It's still not gonna be a viable product if it costs me too much per unit. And if I, remember, I got, I'm the guy that's got the money involved, okay? And I, I'm the one that wanted to make sure it's a nice landscaping plan, I wanna make sure they're nice models. So that's a given, that's, it's gonna be a nice project, okay? But, well, okay, we'll just, because I'm not gonna sit here and fight the village on this thing. If they say, look, we'd like to have it, but we just can't find a way around it, then maybe I gotta make a decision, do I really wanna pursue this further? Is that right? Okay, okay. Okay. We got exactly nothing accomplished, but it's fun being here.
Well, but we did.
Yeah, we actually did, I think, I guess maybe the ball's in my court, do I wanna spend a little money and make positively sure? Now, the sewer, there was, there, there is a question, there's a major question that I can't work around. I can look, the worst-case scenario is they gotta put a lift pump in. Okay, and if I can, if this project generates enough income and so on and so forth, that, and I'm gonna figure I have to do this, okay? But there may be some money that can be saved, but it's not enough money to lose even a whole lot, because if I even bore on that, tap into that and upgrade the pump system, okay, to handle the subdivision, that would be cheaper than installing a lift station. But even if I have a lift station, I don't know about this, being a nice guy, giving out this sewer easement, this water easement, I never thought about it, I have to cross this thing someday. Okay, so I might have, I might have screwed up there a little bit. But we'll see, we'll see. How come life isn't easy, folks?
It never is, never is.
But, the, like I say, when, when that, when that zoning was put in, it was an aim at me not to be able to develop that property, I can tell you that right now, okay? I know it, because it's so far in that field, I mean, that, that you can't go in front of the ZBA and stuff like that. You know, because that's, those are things that you can do, but if they have it in the ordinance that you can't do that, that was, that was a shot at keeping that property, from me developing that property. But that was years ago.
I don't think it was a personal,
I would like to say, so I'm, I'm a consultant, I'm not here all the time, I work with a ton of ordinances. Almost unilaterally, a plan development does not go to the ZBA. Because the reason being is then the ZBA is put in a position where they have to overrule the legislative body, in this case, the village council. To say that the village's ordinance was a shot at you when that's applied across the entire state, I, I can't, I can't.
Well, how that, usually, because I've done, obviously, I'm eighty, so I mean, I've been doing this for a long time, okay? And I have gone in front of ZBAs, but that's because the planning commission recommended that they do this, you understand? And, and that's how they do it. And not only that, you can go, but you can't in this case, but I've gone, because the planning commission say, well, blah, 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 they can't agree on anything. I've gone to those, you know, the council, or the city senate township, or whatever the case is. So, and they, they can, obviously, you're, you're a recommendation, they're the ones that, so you can do that, but I can't, that would be a waste of my breath again.
Yeah, to your point, you have, you've got a lot of investment to do to get to that point, to get an official yes or no from the council.
And, and they couldn't, and according, according to this, they, they legally can't. I don't think they can override that ordinance, can they?
They'd have to change the ordinance. Yeah, I don't see any wiggle room in the amount of density that the village council can approve. I think it's ten percent and that's it.
Okay, well, I don't mean to tie you up anymore, this is, I'm an old guy, just maybe I should talk to you. Okay, well, I'm probably have to join this guy here, because he's looking for things to get done too, right?
No comment.
Well, anyway, folks, I appreciate you listening to me, and we'll see, I'll, I'll investigate over, we'll see.
We're looking at a couple of things as well, and I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see. And sewer, I think everything, I, I, I think the sewer and the water and everything is fine, I don't believe there's any prob, I, I don't think there's any problem there at all. I know, uh, I think the biggest thing is the lift, the lift pumps won't, won't take the, the thirty-one units.
Right, yeah, reading Roe's letter, I think, they, and this is in general, they said, they've gotta do some more investigation, but nothing in their letter says a red flag, this will never work.
Yeah, no, I think I talked to Steve, I, I never met him, but talked to him on the phone, sewer guy, and he said that capacity, it is upgraded, everything. So I don't think there's a problem there. And the water, I don't, in fact, the only thing with the water, because in a condo project like that, you have to sprinkle, I mean, on one side, everything. And, uh, do I, I mean, the easiest way for me is just to use the city water, meter here and there, and just do it, okay? But if there, if water is a problem, then I'd have to drill a well. I mean, don't get me wrong, the city wouldn't want to, but,
You're talking about for the common areas?
For the common area. In fact, I want a Romeo, there's a well in every one of those houses, if you believe that. Maybe there's a well in every house, and so every house had its own sprinkling system. And it was just set up with it, with that, you're responsible for that. With city water, you can run, I think you can run a separate meter, I think that's, that's,
We, we can't have a separate meter here, no.
No? Well, we might wanna talk about this, we might, we might wanna talk about that, because you're, I'm, in fact, I'm, uh, probably going to build for someone that lives here in the sub town. You would say in a bill that six hundred bucks a quarter?
Yeah, four hundred.
Water sewer bills? Yeah, oh, okay.
I pray, I pray for rain.
Well, you know, last summer, only twice in the spring that I put my sprinklers on, I never put them on one time for the whole summer.
And they cut the grass three days a week?
No.
Yeah, we had a good summer, we got a bit of mild rain, and we didn't have to go over much.
It was great, but I'm too old to do rain dance.
Nice meeting you.
Nice, nice talking to you, folks, and hopefully, maybe,
Uh, before you leave, was the issue with the detention basin resolved?
Uh, I'm, I did do a preliminary on that, because there is, on the, when I did phase three, this is on there, this is phase three, but I didn't know what I was gonna do with phase four. But it was sized for, for, for this, for seven acres, might have been seven and a half acres, but anyway, it was sized for this. The detention pond is big enough. Okay, probably bigger than I really need. But, but to answer your question, and an engineer looked at it, just did, it, it, well, obviously, it's built according to plan, because, you know, the city, you know, took it over. But, yes, the detention pond's big enough.
Because one of the recommendations had to do with talking to the county drain commissioner? Apparently, you need to sign off on something regarding using the detention basin for this project.
Uh, well, the, the, the detention basin really is a responsibility of the village. That's, that's, that's what it's all about. Yeah, I got, that's all, I couldn't get that for everything approved until the village got a, the retention pond, even though it's still, it's, I still own it, because it's all one big piece of property. But, uh, it's, the village's responsibility to maintain it. And that's, I, I might even have, I don't know, but anyway, to answer your question, yes, it's big enough. And the village, if you did read something about that, what it's all about is the village has to maintain it. I think the planner probably looked into that too, you know, but anyway, I can give you the, all the paperwork on that.
Just find one section again.
Yeah, I see it, and it says the plans need to clarify who owns the existing detention basin, if not public, written permission for this use will be required. So I think,
Well, anyway, that's, that's not,
It's a combination of,
That's not one of my problems, the retention, that's not one of my,
No, I didn't see it as it being insurmountable, it was just, yeah, here it is. Use of the offsite detention area will need to be reviewed to satisfy of the village engineer and county drain commission.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the engineering, and that's the money I gotta spend to, to, you know, verify stuff like that. But that's, I know that's not a problem. The engineer, the engineer's already looked at it, at least, in fact, it's pretty obvious that it's not a problem. I mean, some of the unit is looked at, there's some complications. And, and nothing, nothing has changed since we did that, would, would, to make that not big enough or something else. You did look into that.
I didn't, I didn't, Roe would have, or will, as the project was on.
Yeah, in order to achieve the final condominium site plan approval, the app will need to provide evidence of all necessary state and county agency approvals.
Yeah, yeah, so that's something, first of all, I'd have to prove that it's big enough, that that's, that's all, that's a mechanical type of thing that you just gotta do to get everything, you know, those improvement processes.
That was just one of the recommendations, I was just curious what this task was, that's all.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's low on my list. But what's high on my list is twenty percent.
True.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Oh, you've been last decade or two since I seen you last time?
I'm good, I'm good.
Busy, okay?
I got your papers, Jeff.
Okay.
That's about how all the meetings with Fritz goes. Brian, I'm really glad you were here to take care of some of that, because there's a lot of that that I wouldn't have had a close.
You did.
My question.
Happy to help.
Can you arbitrarily tap into, would McComb Orchard Trail let you just tap into the trail anywhere you want?
Um, sort of, you can, yes. I mean, on your own private property, you're allowed to put anything you want right up to the property line. I, I don't know what the authority is that owns that section of the trail. But in most of my dealings with many trail councils, and even the DNR, they're all for additional connections for pedestrians.
Really?
So there'd be some coordination and cooperation, but I just, I envision everybody in the subdivision to the north could walk through here and get to the trail instead of having to go all the way around.
It would be very convenient for me, because I live on Torrey, right by Franklin, you know, and so, a little easier than going down by the crane and get it.
Because it would be with McComb Orchard Trail Commission?
McComb Orchard, okay, thank you.
So you will speak to Commissioner, um, Don Brown, he's the, I believe he's still the chair of that commission.
Don Brown?
Don Brown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But I've never seen them, well, any other commission does not want them, so.
They've generally been pretty agreeable, you just have to speak to them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, in this case, it might be, the owner might be the harder person to convince that the option there is a good idea.
I said the trial committee would be agreeable to approach, I wouldn't say anybody has.
Anything else you guys wanna discuss on this project?
Are we looking at a timeframe to hear back from Mr. Fritz, or any of the other issues regarding the site plan?
Mr. Fritz works on his own time plan, but we'll, we'll keep with the village and make sure that we stay in contact and I don't imagine that he would be back for our next meeting, but possibly the following meeting.
So the trail is just to have a nice way to get to the, to the path, right? Because if he owns that whole area around the retention, that means he owns the far east side where the cul-de-sac is. And if, you know, if we're just asking him to do something a little additional, like, you know, something there, or?
Well, the way that the properties are laid out, there's no way to connect to.
No, so I'm taking the next one down, Liberty. Because he owns a retention pond, goes all the way down to there.
Does he own all of that too?
That's what I thought he said, that even though the city manages the retention pond, he owns the property.
Yes, we do have responsibility to maintain the pond.
I thought I remembered Ed saying that when he was on the DPW, so, okay, okay. All right, well, long process. Are we ready to move forward?
Don't drop it all.
All right, we are on, let's see, we have the twenty twenty-three year in review, and then the twenty twenty-four agenda, which we went over, um, last month, but we didn't do the proper motions, Becky's got her little notes here for me to get that done. So it's actually two separate motions with our twenty twenty-three interview, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three available to Armita Planning Commission review and send to Armita Village Council.
It's a separate motion, she says. So, the first motion needs to be to approve it, and then we need a separate, well, so we'd need a second on that motion, and then the second half would be a second motion.
Okay, so I'll amend that to... Okay, now.
Approve, just approve.
Okay, I thought I ordered that as an approve, but then you added, uh.
You're adding a, a section that you can't add in your motion, in your first motion.
Because I thought I ordered motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three Village Armita Planning Commission review.
And that's, needs to stop, now we need a second for that.
I'll second that part.
Okay.
Okay.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, you can do the second half of that one separately.
Backtrack, who's one and two on that one again?
You.
I'm in the first one, second, okay. I'm gonna make sure I got this right for the notes, that's why.
Okay, so now separately, we would need a motion to send the review.
Okay, all right, so, I motion to send the two thousand twenty-three Village of Armita Planning Commission review. I'm sorry, where were we sending this to?
Village Council.
I mean, to the village council.
Seems a little redundant.
That's what she's got written down here, but.
That's why I'm very confused right now, because it's different from my notes. Um, if that's.
She's talking about review, is one motion, and agenda is a second motion, isn't it? She doesn't have very clear notes.
I, I wondered. But I don't know what the twenty twenty-four agenda was, so I wasn't going to comment.
We've already done it that way, so we'll do this first one as two separates, but yes, Kevin, you were correct. Her notes say I have to separate them, she's talking about separating the review and the agenda, my apologies.
Okay, so we need to make, do we need to go back and remake the first one?
No, let's just, we need a second to Al's motion to send it to council.
Okay, I will second that then.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, you can put those two together, when we're looking at a motion for the twenty twenty-four agenda.
All right, I motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four agenda and send it to Village Council.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it goes to council. Uh, let's see. Next thing on the list, twenty twenty-four meeting dates, okay, when we were setting those dates, nobody was really exactly sure on when the fair was, turns out the fair is earlier than we had thought, so the meeting could move, or it could stay on the nineteenth, that depends on who, the fair is the twelfth to the eighteenth, so we would need the very next, next day after the fair, who stayed on the nineteenth?
Now, was there nothing going on in this building on that date?
No, the nineteenth is available.
No, but I mean, they were looking at, uh, the fifth, I guess was the original date that was on my calendar. And I thought that was part of the reason why we bumped it back was to avoid the fair, but also have it where it didn't conflict with anything else for that date.
Not that we're aware of.
Okay, so.
So we either stay to the fifth or change to the nineteenth. I think they're making the suggestion because we had actually said in our meeting that we weren't sure of the fair week, and we have been meeting on the third Mondays. So we either stick with the early one on the fifth, or we move it to the nineteenth, which is our usual meeting date.
I'm fine with the nineteenth, everyone else is.
Change it to the nineteenth then?
We have to have a motion for that.
All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four Village Armita Planning Commission meeting dates and send to Armita Village Council.
No, 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 we're changing it.
Or just changing the one?
Yeah.
Um.
Moving from the fifth to the nineteenth of August.
Okay, so I'm going through, this is different from the notes I had to write, typed in here.
We have to change the date before it can.
The fifth to the nineteenth, okay. Um, make sure I'm wearing this correctly. So it does be a motion to change the two thousand twenty-four Village Armita Planning Commission meeting date from August fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and send to Armita Village Council, is that correct?
We don't need to send it to you?
No, we just need to change the date.
Okay. Then I'll just amend it, just to drop the last part, I'll send it to Village Council, then.
So again, we have a motion to move it from the fifth to the nineteenth, the August meeting only. By Kevin, and Al has seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are moving our August twenty twenty-four planning commission date from August fifth to August nineteenth. Okay. We will go on to DDA business, we looked at the budget and sent that to council, so now we, they've sent it back to us with their approval. Now what we have to do is adopt the DDA budget. So that's another motion, to adopt.
All right, motion to adopt, uh, proposed budget for April twenty-fourth through March, two thousand twenty-five.
Second?
I second.
Hold on, who's, who's second there?
Hey, me.
Okay. That's who you were first, you were second, yeah, I heard two seconds, that don't throw me there.
I asked for a second, so that was me speaking. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is now adapted. Uh, one thing that I do need to, what?
I have a question.
What?
DDA is a separate standalone entity, you guys run DDA. So, do you need to open the DDA?
I don't know that we've ever done that.
I think you do.
Um.
And make a motion within the DDA meeting? Then close the DDA and back in the year?
Now that you say that, that is the way that the commission had done that in meetings where it's been before.
Okay.
So you suspend the planning commission meeting.
Okay, okay, so let's drop that motion and approval. And at.
Y'all, I'm glad you said something.
At eight nineteen, we are going to open.
You're going to close your kind of.
Plan, close the, planning commission. Suspend the planning commission meeting and open the DDA.
At.
At eight twenty. Who, got that, Kevin? Sorry.
I'm working on it.
So, now we are in DDA business. Could we please have another motion for the same thing?
No, I mean, no, motion to approve, uh, the April two thousand twenty-four Armita DDA budget through March, two thousand twenty-five, sorry about that.
You're not approving it, you're adopting it.
Oh, it's adopted, I'm sorry, you had those words right the first time, okay. I motion to approve Armita DDA.
Adopt.
Adopt.
Adopt the DDA budget for April two thousand twenty-four through March, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and now we need.
I second that.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
You never really captioned it.
Now we have officially adopted the DDA budget.
Totally unusual and very complicated.
Yeah.
Tell me about it.
While we are in DDA business, I will mention that the check was made to pay the agent fees on the bond, which is something that is just normally done through the village for the bond, where we owe money, so that was eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's all all taken care of, and that's really all that the DDA ever does now is pay the bond fee. So, unless there's anybody with anything for DDA business?
And the, that was, check was made on when?
February sixth.
Thank you.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, then at eight twenty-one, I will close the DDA portion. Okay, we have to have a motion first.
All right, motion to.
I said you were catching us at our bus today.
Motion to close the DDA meeting of February twenty-first at eight twenty-two P M.
I'll second.
Okay, we, we needed all those in favor now, that, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
We have closed the DDA portion of the business, and now go.
You're going to reinstate your regular planning commission.
Reinstate the regular planning commission meeting of February twenty-first.
Yeah, I would.
Might as well.
I have a motion to restart the Armita Planning Commission on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, eight twenty-three P M.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are back in planning commission business, okay. So, while Brian is here, we have all the zoning ordinances um, that we had gone over, and they have looked at, gave the recommendations. So now, any discussions with Brian regarding those?
Is this for final approval?
So.
We are on final, yeah.
Well, so, these are zoning ordinance amendments, so technically you have to schedule a public hearing if it is something that you want to move forward and submit to council to adopt, so.
Okay, and so, and so actually, we're not ready to do that, we have changes to discuss as far as the fencing goes, okay, so no, where, if there was anything in the changes that were sent, that Becky did send to you guys for where they have gone over, what we've discussed, now's the time to ask Brian. Okay, so one of, one of the things that Becky and I had looked at is that when we went over the fence section of the ordinances, we had actually mentioned having just a cyclone fence. We changed to four foot, well, it does, we did change to four foot at a hundred percent visibility.
Yeah, I'm pulling up what she sent here, so, the.
So you're going back to article?
Oh, okay, she's, because it said, it actually says chain link fence. We didn't, we didn't say to change the ornamental fencing, we didn't say to change the rail fencing. We did one section of that, so in the book, remember, it was one of these boxes that we went through. There's actually a listing for each type of fence. We said, yes, we wanted to change the chain link fence to four foot, hundred percent visibility. We need to have all of those say that, we did have a gentleman come into the village office and ask, well, what if I have a wrought iron fence?
So I pulled up, um, the latest draft that we prepared that came out of our office, and on that table, we have a chain link fence in the front listed at four feet. Living fence, no maximum. Ornamental fence, three feet. Privacy fence, not allowed. Rail fence, three feet, industrial fence, not applicable. And then, we've added a D and an E, so the D reads fences along a driveway. Fences located along a driveway shall be set back twenty feet with a maximum of three feet in height, even living fences.
Which I think is a very good idea. And that is adding a D.
Definitely along the driveway, yep, that's adding a D, and then adding an E is fences in the front yard, and it says fences located in the front yard must be non-obscuring. So we talked about.
So that would, that would include the gentleman's question about.
Like a wrought iron.
Yeah, the wrought iron's gonna fall under that ornamental fence, so it would be a three foot maximum height, and they would comply with the non-obscuring standard.
Well, so that was the gentleman's question, is that why, why you couldn't have a four foot, is there, is there something that, yeah?
Practically speaking, four feet is a really high fence to have in your front yard, it really, it really is, in most instances, um.
Nothing says get off my lawn that are four foot fence.
It is a way to say, stay the hell away from me, um, and so typically, if you look at most traditional downtowns, you'll get, actually, three feet is kinda high, a lot of times it'll be like thirty inches is the maximum, so that you're delineating a property line, but you're not really keeping people out, sure.
Years ago, we had a conversation in planning about the wrought iron fence height, and we had a resident here in town that had, it was actually lower, I think it was like twenty-three, twenty-four inches, and some kids were playing around, and one tried to hurt that.
Oh, tripped over it, because it was too low?
They were playing around, and one showed the other one, and cut three of them down.
Honestly, that was like my first thought, my fancy idea.
Yes, so, we discussed at planning that maybe we should raise the height of that one. So, I guess I raised it to thirty, but I don't see why they'd go up to four foot with the others, I think the higher the better.
Well, I think if, if we're doing the chain link fence, I don't understand why we would exclude a hundred percent visibility.
I think if you're gonna do, if you're gonna let one be four feet, you should consider all of them being four feet, right?
Stay consistent, right?
Stay consistent, because there's not really, if you go back to the reason we have a zoning ordinance, it's health, safety, and welfare, and if we're saying it's safe to have a four foot fence of one type, it's probably safe to have, as long as even view in, I think that's the.
Right, the hundred percent visibility has to.
You know, you don't want somebody putting up a chain link fence that has the mesh behind it, or the, or the slats, right? And then nobody sees in, and there's a mad dog behind it, or who knows what else could be going on.
Believe when we just.
Or it's just a, get off my lawn, it's just uninviting, and it's not a good look, right, but.
Exactly, when all the slats don't match color.
Filling in patches, yeah, they break in half.
When, uh, when we did discuss that, as, as far as going, raising the chain link fence and visibility, I think we did mention that they could not have, I mean, I understand we're saying a hundred percent visibility, but, so so that everyone does understand, it does say in there, they cannot do this, doesn't it?
It says, they must be non-obscuring, I, I think maybe we should tweak that a little bit, and.
Just make it a little more understandable, but.
A lot of ordinances just say it has to be fifty percent opacity, which means you have to be able to, if you look at a ten foot section, five feet of it can be covered. And so, um, you're, you're looking at me with questioning eyes.
Yeah, why, why would we have five, three foot that's allowable to be covered?
I.
I'd have to simple definition to it.
I think it's a measurable area, you know, but, um, if you just say non-obscuring, like we have in this draft, that's up to a lot of interpretation.
Sure is, because you could say, I'm gonna put slats in down to say this height, non-obscuring.
Right.
Looks like crap, but.
That's exactly right.
You know, so, I, I like a hundred percent visibility.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, we had all agreed on that when we made that statement, yeah, well, a hundred percent. So I don't know that non-obscuring really. So I don't know that non-obscuring really makes that plain to anyone reading the ordinance.
No, it's. If I'm your code enforcement folks, I can't enforce non-obscuring. A hundred percent visibility, though, is problematic too, because then technically they shouldn't even have any fence.
Yeah, it's impossible, because everything's out there.
It's not possible, so. Trying to think off the top of my head, I think seventy percent or something. I think you'd want less, it'd be fifty percent or less. Opaque. I'm trying to think of.
I have language that I like anywhere else.
Give me one second.
Mm-hmm. One hundred percent non-obscure disability.
Everybody, even a post obscures it.
Yeah, you can't enforce that.
Hundred percent just can't work.
Well, you can't have a big post like that. You only have no, let's be.
The test has to have a post.
Well, a pole, that's.
Yeah, but that's even a percent, so just technically you can't have it.
Right, that's.
Stick the word reasonably in there. It always works.
I mean, there's some standards that you want to have some flexibility on, um. We could say something like, um. Fences located in the front yard must allow visibility into property, into the yard.
Reasonable visibility.
Reasonable visibility to ensure. I always want to tie it back to health, safety and welfare.
Mm-hmm.
Um. To ensure the health, safety and welfare of occupants and passersby. Something like that.
Oh, I'm just curious, so there's a wording about forty percent. I'm in section twenty-five, oops, go back to it. Um. Should have put this in a PDF, um. Come on, go faster, help. Yeah, this will be on the definitions. Let me just go down the page. Um, I have page two-five dash one-five. So this is a word.
Is that in what's in the book or is that what's in our changes?
That was in the changes.
In the changes, okay.
That was in the change, two-five dash one-five. Uh, there's talk under section, actually sections. Because you're looking for a number to use, and so we can start with that.
Oh, I see, so.
Fence D. Um.
Yeah, where it says block vision to an extent greater than forty percent.
Yeah, I saw another, um.
D, F.
I thought that was the third one, so.
Now, something like that, like your example where you have a ten-foot fence, and if it was forty percent, you could have just one solid chunk of forty. Now, would you want to say per three feet? Or you, you know, so so I can't.
Just block one section.
Every other section, you know, have the fence, every other section is totally blocked, you know?
Sometimes I see that going on.
I see you go through that.
If you say per three foot section or something, I don't know. I don't know how you could do that, but.
It's interesting, because you, I've even seen fences that have, you know, pretty solid brick columns, and then in between them, you've got some rails, and so there's essentially nothing for most of it, but absolutely solid for a two-foot wide post or something.
Right, right.
What if you put with.
I don't know if we want to get.
With no filler material?
I'm sorry?
Say with no filler material? That would take care of anybody want to do a brick or block or slats or anything else weaved into a chain link?
Oh, in the chain link one.
Yeah.
We're talking about any the ornamental and.
I don't talk about anything, you know, you could weave straw through it if you wanted to.
Or you say excluding fence posts or, you know, support posts.
Yeah, so D, E and F, it was forty percent. It was a number that was given. I figured that'd be a good starting point.
Yeah. So it is nice to have that in the definition, because however your code enforcement or your building official interprets forty percent, I like giving him the flexibility to say what that forty percent is over. Is it over the entirety of the fence line? Is it over?
Each section.
Each section, you know? So I like giving him some flexibility there. Him or her.
Probably be the servant.
Okay.
Better to stay big.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and so I like having it there, but going back to the other section. If we if we go back to, you've, we've got to allow visibility into and out of the property. I think that's the what I'm hearing you say we want, right? We want to be able to see, and we don't want it to be a solid wall.
Right, right, right. Right.
And then that way they can go choose any of these types of fences, chain link or ornamental or rail.
As long as it provides forty percent visibility or sixty percent visibility, right, forty percent.
Um.
Forty percent not.
Not blocked.
To an extent greater than forty percent for the purposes of obscuring or screening an area from public view.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so anything greater than forty constitutes a private, a privacy fence, which that section does not allow. So I think that's okay.
Right, okay.
Okay, so I'll change D. I'm sorry, I will change E. And I'm saying fences located in the front yard must allow visibility into and out of a property to ensure the health, safety and welfare of occupants and passersby.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, and then the dimensions that I had noted before, that aligns with what Becky had written out for notes, correct?
Right.
Except for, I'm sorry, that's not true, so we we talked about tonight, all of them would be.
No, 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 right. The at four.
Four footers.
Right, including the living fence. Rather than having that no maximum.
I don't know why would you never have a maximum for living fences.
No, because talk about blocking the view.
I know, I see where it makes sense.
So I think all the allowable front yard fencing should be at four foot.
So one point on the living fence, if you're gonna allow. So a living fence is by definition here, going back to article twenty-five, a continuous hedgerow of living plant material planted and maintained for the purpose of enclosing an area. So that's going to be by definition a solid fence.
That's true.
Do you want a solid fence, then that's four feet tall in the front yard?
That's, yeah, that's true.
Right, so somebody who does want that on a.
That's true. I just don't like the no maximum on it. When you've got a ten-foot living fence in a front yard.
Yeah.
How how do you say that's allowable? So.
Well, can we can we just take living fence in exception of three feet?
I kind of like that one being lower. So you actually can't see in.
Right.
Right, when you're you're sitting in a car driving by.
Right, and okay, and there's the the safety part of it, right? Kid comes running out or whatever, you know?
You know, yeah.
Running, running in the streets.
Kid can run through bushes, you know, you'll see a kid climb over a fence.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense. Okay, so the living fence, then we continue to allow no maximum in the side and the rear? Are you thinking you would like?
I, yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine. I mean, does anybody have anything?
No, I mean.
Okay.
Or that everybody use or whatever those.
Right, yes.
Okay, so.
And we actually have quite a bit of that in town.
On the side and the rear?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so then living fence, three foot max, ornamental goes up to four foot?
Yes, and so, well, and we've already changed, I believe, the chain link to four foot. Real fence, yes, four foot.
And rail fence.
Okay, anybody else got anything on fencing?
Another thing is that too, remember right in the corner of main and first, the living fence, she's cutting down twice, it's cut right down now. When you came up spensing, you couldn't see what was coming down there.
Right.
Because they were right out at the over the sidewalk.
Right, over, yes.
Oh, you had to be almost out in the street to pass that fence.
Right.
So at three foot, you should be above the fence.
I I think, I think so.
So I think that's a good rule.
So, and that lines up with what we what we had added in D, where you have, you're setting a three-foot limit to the height of a fence along a driveway.
Okay.
So I think that's good.
Okay. All right, anybody else got anything on that section? Okay, and then Becky wanted me to ask you about this one. The apartments and inside the businesses. Do we have it working so that we don't want the apartments downstairs and the businesses upstairs?
Yeah, so that was one thing that, um, let me look and see if that got changed in here and uh that was six point two oh one. One of the things in your current ordinance, it does set a maximum of fifty percent of, and I'm sorry, twenty-five percent of a primary. Let me start over. In your residential districts, your R one and R M, you allow accessory apartments as long as they're twenty-five percent of the square footage of the main of the main dwelling. So you allow that today, um, let's see.
That's dwelling, residential.
Residential, yes, so you allow that in residential today.
Yes, okay.
That one I don't think needs to change, so this one does not need to change, but in that same section, you also say that you can have an apartment that is accessory to office and service uses, so that's letter C. This is in section six point two oh one, if you want to follow. Um, and today, your ordinance says accessory apartments shall be contained entirely within the primary building. They shall occupy no more than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the building. Each accessory apartment shall have separate kitchen, bath and toilet facilities and a private entrance. That's, and then there's talk about if you have multiple accessory apartments in the building, they can have a common hallway, but they still have to add their own entrance. The problem arose with an inquiry about some of these thresholds and what counts, what doesn't count, but I, one of the things that I identified in here is your current language doesn't say that the accessory apartment in a commercial use has to be above. So you could have fifty percent of your whole floor area of a building.
In apartments.
In a commercial area, the apartments on the first floor and commercial up, which is not what you want, you want. If you want to allow accessory apartments, they should be upstairs.
Upstairs. The downs should be people walking down the sidewalk, want to see into your businesses, they want to be able to enter and exit.
Yeah, that's right.
Appropriately, not not going past somebody, you know, hallway or housing.
Then if you're on Lakeside, I'm looking at it, whatever road back there, and I think that's way good. It's all businesses below, and I think those are apartments right above it.
Yeah, and yeah, and that that was one thing that we'd mentioned, we'd like to see put into that. So there's no question when businesses are coming forward and wanting to put apartments in, they do need to be in the upper levels.
What about, when you're saying upper level, what about three-story buildings?
Can be second and third.
Combined, can all be fifty percent or each floor can only be fifty percent?
Uh, floor, total floor area of the building.
Building. Oh, total floor area.
So.
So yeah, that's that'd be two-thirds, well, gross floor area of building.
Right now, it says fifty percent of the gross floor area of the building. So in theory, your second floor could have half office, half residential, and then a third story would be all residential. If all three stories were the same floor area.
Yeah, it's the same floor area.
So we need restructuring all of the wording.
Well, this is one of the questions that you've got before you.
Yeah, I mean, do we want unlimited? I mean, well, is there anything wrong with having a business on the lower and then apartment, apartment?
Because you've got the business in town that wants to change the use of the second floor.
Right.
Yeah, they want to, they want to do residential on second and third.
Right.
Is there a reason we wouldn't want that?
Parking? Is that what someone said, that there's not a lot of parking for people, the more apartments you add?
More garbage people.
No, I think this particular building has parking.
Okay.
No?
No. Yeah, you see.
What's in the rear?
Village Street Alley.
Because aren't there like two or three bays in the rear?
They've got, there's garages in the back.
Right.
But it won't cover the additional floor.
Not enough to cover additional apartments, okay.
Because it's single car garage. Fortunately for her, there's village parking just across the street. Back behind the hotel. A P I. And people rarely utilize that, so it's not like they can say, oh, it's always full.
It's used, it's used.
It's used, but it's rare that it's ever filled. Rare.
At the daytime, I've always seen that packed.
Drive-through. Drive-through on Friday night too.
I didn't say Friday night, I said the daytime.
So.
I'm going by in the daytime.
Word could better be there before four o'clock, or you're not parking on Friday nights.
Yeah, I've seen the.
And I don't know where anybody wants to do anything or what they want to do, but we can't just magically make parking to accommodate everybody.
Right.
Unless they're tearing buildings down.
Right. So the way the wording is now.
Not ideal.
Right.
Um, and the other problem is with the gross floor area as your usable, or as the the standard here, so gross floor area is um, by definition, the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the floors of the building measured from the exterior face of the exterior walls or the centerline separating two buildings. So that's literally edge to edge of that building, which is not.
Times three?
I'm sorry?
Times three?
Times three.
Yeah, okay.
So um, now what that doesn't account for are things like mechanical rooms, stairways, closets, all those sorts of things that become unusable space, unusable space, so.
Necessary.
So what about the garages?
Um, garages, it says.
They're attached, they're all within that same.
Yeah, they're within the building.
Footprint.
So your current definition says any space devoted to off-street parking or loading shall not be included in floor area. Areas of basements, utility rooms.
I think the second and the third floor is bigger than the first floor.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they go right up over it.
Areas of basements, utility rooms, breezeways, unfinished attics, porches or attached garages are also not included.
So you can take the balconies off.
So.
To the square footage too.
Yeah, what that means by using your gross floor area today is that so to your point, the, the garages are not included, so the first floor, just by by your definitions, is smaller than each of the upperes.
Mm-hmm.
And so you're gonna have, uh, realistically, today, that, that second floor is gonna have to be used almost exclusively for commercial or office purposes by the definitions today. I think to your question, is it okay to have residential on both of those upper floors? I don't have a problem with it as long as you have adequate facilities for parking for
Right.
other things, cause it's.
But that's, I think it needs to be only residential on the upper floors.
Well, we could certainly put that in, any floor that has residential uses shall only be used for residential uses, so there's not a mix.
Right, it has to be above ground level.
Or if, if somebody wanted to do commercial upstairs too, they could. They just couldn't have a apartment on that same.
Yeah, res- yeah, apartment can only be able.
Above, right, and on the ground.
I'm saying that businesses can also be, but apartments can also be.
Yeah, yeah. So I had proposed a little bit different language to Becky and I never got back to it, which is why it's not in your draft, I apologize, but. So I said accessory apartments shall be subject to the following standards, one, accessory apartments shall not occupy a usable floor area greater than fifty percent of the usable floor area of the permitted principal uses in the same building. Uh, accessory apartments shall not be permitted on ground floors or below ground floors, so that accomplishes what we need to there. Each accessory apartment shall, so this is stolen from your current ordinance, accessory apartments have to have a toilet, bathroom, a kitchen. Um.
Private entrance.
Private entrance, that's all in there still, and then number four, accessory apartments shall be contained entirely within the primary building. Um, this, uh, number four is so that you don't get, um, a she shed or something in the back of a commercial building that gets turned into a, an apartment, right, so.
Getting somebody living in there, right, right.
Which can sometimes happen, or you know, somebody has a little storage unit in the back of their, their business that ends up becoming somebody's bedroom, that's.
Yeah.
That's heavily dotted or, I mean, there's BVR, you know.
Of course, it's low cost, so, right, exactly.
Right.
So I do think that we should, I like that provision to add, um, add that we don't want residence, uh, residences or dw- uh, dwelling units on the same floor as non-residential uses. We should probably also say that we don't want non-residential uses above a residential, so we want apartments, same ones between offices above and.
Right. And then middle and businesses up on the, right. But, and there's also something in there that says if they're putting in apartments, they also have to have proper parking, um.
That is.
Drive entrance ways.
Well.
I mean, they don't always have to be able to be driven to, to some of our downtowns who wouldn't. But adequate parking, otherwise, if we have a building that puts in thirty apartments because their building is big enough, but they only have five parking spaces allowed, where are all these people going?
Right, and then all the businesses are gonna be really mad, you know, because it's taking up their spots.
That's their own fault. They can park, the businesses all should be required to park in the public parking and leave the fronts of these businesses.
Well, that's what she's saying, there would be tenants parking in their customers' parking areas, is what she's saying.
There's their customers who would be able to park there.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, well, and put their parking in their old parking spaces in front of their buildings, so.
But we could say that no apartment parking should be in public lots, it should not. Apartment parking should be designated in private parking spaces.
Which makes sense because we don't have twenty-four hour parking in town.
Where are they? Oh, yeah.
Right.
So they have to have a dedicated space, whether it's.
Right, because I was wondering that too, because I was, um, down by We the People, and I, my husband and I were walking, and I said, oh, you can't park here like overnight or between a certain, I'm like, gosh, how's that work, what are all these people that live up there parking?
For winter hours?
But that's only on Main Street, right?
Yeah, right.
Well, I think you're talking about, um, Fulton just south of Main.
It was on Fulton, like on the side of We the People, yeah.
Because I think that's for when they block that area, they don't want that area to have vehicles in, cause they can't block it out.
Right, yeah, on the side of the building.
Right, but it, but it, it didn't say.
But up front, you can't.
The designation, I think, is in C one.
Okay.
So, anything but C one, you can't park overnight.
So, yeah, they, they have to have enough adequate parking spaces.
Private parking.
Right, to withstand the amount of tenants.
I've got a question on the permit thing, so like we were just saying, like for business purposes, you can't have, we don't want a business above it, but what if a business is using like the upper level for, uh, storage? And I really don't think business, they're just doing, they just got their stuff up there.
Still commercial use.
I'm sorry?
Still commercial use.
But it's not, you know, you don't have customers going up and down.
Like traffic is much, but you would have some.
Yeah.
And then store, you can take up there or take down.
But then there's nothing to say that he wouldn't decide one day, you know? Maybe I'll just put a counter here, people can walk through and myself all my jobs.
Yeah, or if they're giving inventory kind of, I guess, then they would be.
Wouldn't wanna be on that, yeah, that very top floor anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, and then the switch to usable floor area instead of gross floor area gives us a more honest appraisal of how much those spaces are actually using, so I like that better than just the limits of the building.
Okay.
Now, are you looking at the building or each floor separately?
The building.
As a whole?
As a whole.
At fifty percent, so those are the gross.
I'm sorry, fifty percent of the usable floor area of permitted principal uses in the building. So you're, I'm putting the emphasis on however much space the principal use is gonna use, residential has to be less than half.
So what about like the, like, so they have two stories, so how is that, how are they able to do, how can they have two apartments if you have business on the lower, you got two floors above it?
I think in that instance, they wouldn't be allowed to do residential in that building.
And is that something we want?
Well, they wouldn't until you get to the third floor.
Huh, we've got other buildings that have covered porches in the backside of the building. And apartments in the second and third floors.
Do we have a, maybe we should start over and ask the question that you asked, which was, do we care if we have two floors of residential above commercial?
Yeah, I just wanna know why we're.
I don't care if they have parking.
As long as they have adequate parking, we're okay with it, is that.
Yeah, it seems like there's other criterias to lock it in other than gross area.
Right. Right.
It makes it a bit easier to, right?
Yeah, but I, like I said, we just, we wanna make sure that it is living spaces on the second, third floors.
Bathroom, kitchen, and parking space.
Yeah, you know, all, all apartment space needs to be contained on the second and third floors.
So bathroom, kitchen, parking space and.
At underground level or lower.
Right.
So the fifty percent really doesn't matter at all.
I don't think so, I mean, they can use their second and third floor.
I, 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 I take it to a quarter percent area.
So as long as, as long as the apartments are upstairs.
They have adequate parking.
And they have adequate parking in the kitchen, bath, toilet. We're okay with it.
I don't see why not.
Really, cause what's the difference if you have four apartments up there or one big apartment?
Right. You're still using.
As long as there's enough space.
You're still using up that level.
With more parking spots.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Right. Yeah, in that case, the building official should never allow a permit or a C of O for something where we don't have adequate parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
And how you determine what's adequate parking?
And, next question, so if you have a big studio where three people can live, you know, most likely two people are buying vehicles, is there a car,
That was going here and there.
is there a parking spot per square foot limitation?
There is, let me find it, you have parking standards.
And does the alleyway come?
No, alley, alley, alley's not really designated.
That's where all those apartments park.
Well, they park up into the building, alleys go different shapes. But they're not.
Are they allowed to use that as parking?
That's their private property.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
That's not all alley, up into by the buildings, as much as the buildings go like this back there, what goes from the alley to the building is their property, just the alley strip is the alley.
So I guess we really don't, we don't care where they're parking, all the cars, we have to, if, if they have a designated amount of spots
That's what I'm saying, how you designate.
for that building. That's the only spots they can give.
I'm also trying to think.
This building can't be parking in this building's parking spaces.
Trying to think, I was like, like looking for apartments before, they would say there was a selling by apartment with private parking.
Right.
So insinuating that there are probably apartments without pub, you just gotta find a public parking in, if you gotta make the walk, you gotta make the walk.
Right. Right. So I guess really we can't.
Yeah, you could be in a, in a situation where the landlord has a lease agreement on parking that's a block away or something, that's still a designated spot that you can tie that occupant to use that space.
Right, but that's up to the landlord, it's against our concern, as long as a tenant
Doesn't have to be on site.
Right.
Is willing to make the walk.
Right.
Yeah, the owner would just have to demonstrate it as part of their C of O for that, or for their rental permit, do you do rental permits?
Cause for this particular building, you could have as many as sixteen cars. There's four apartments, then they'll be.
Oh, you say they, they could have, they.
They could potentially have sixteen parking spaces.
Right. Yeah, so and that, that's definitely not in the back of that building.
No. There are no other parking spots for that building in the back, other than those garages.
So, yeah, I guess, can you say parking your own?
Pretty much it.
You gotta demonstrate, well, so you.
Caveat antor?
You're. What was that?
Caveat antor?
I don't know that phrase.
A left bar viewer.
Oh.
Or the renter viewer.
A little bit, I mean, so your ordinance in the parking section in nine oh three, I'm sorry, nine oh five, says accessory apartments have to have a minimum of one parking space per dwelling unit and a maximum of one and a half per dwelling unit. So.
In a public parking.
No, private parking, dedicated parking for an accessory apartment.
No.
She has none.
No.
She has, there's no property that she owns, it's private property.
Right.
So.
That donor goes quarter to quarter on the, the lot scam.
Right.
She's gonna have to figure out, actually, even to do it today, she would have to figure out.
That she's waiting for us to change the ordinances and hoping that we're changing them in her favor.
Well, I think this language does work in her favor to occupy the second and third floor.
They just.
But we're not gonna, but we, but we shouldn't, right, we shouldn't address, I don't think you wanna change that standard necessarily
Get them cars.
so that she can occupy that.
Well, you can't make exception.
Do your, do the other buildings that have upper story apartments have dedicated parking for it?
Yes.
Some do because of those areas in the very back, but the majority of them park back behind API or.
In the, that's the public, that's the public parking area.
As its property. That is the public.
As the village's public parking spot, not.
Right.
And that's, that is, there is not a problem today.
And you can't designate, and you can't designate that they have this spot or this spot because of the village property.
When Chaps has a good night, you better be home early.
Yeah. Yeah.
Prepare for it.
Do you wanna treat this one that's waiting and any others that come after that the same way?
Right.
You'd have to, yeah.
Where it's all.
Yeah, we can't.
If they're, if you find parking, you're fine, if not.
Right around the block a few times, hopefully moves.
I guess.
I don't know.
So they, they, where, where parking is not available, they would have to, it's gonna have to be
They just got purpose, understanding.
parking within, you know, village rules, you know, the, the.
They'd be parking down the streets.
Can you park those?
I mean, into the subs.
Can you park in residential streets overnight?
I've lost this section.
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
You can park along Main Street.
I don't even think we have like a snow emergency or anything anywhere, do we?
Yeah.
Well, it's typically between, um, October, November to March.
November.
So I mean, I guess they can have the apartments, but it's the responsibility of the landlord to explain the parking rules, parking regulations, parking.
Explanation.
Off-street parking.
Explanation of parking must be in rental agreement.
Off-street parking shall be located within five hundred feet of a primary building entrance to which such spaces are accessory. So in other words, they're not gonna be going very far.
And if you put that in, you're limiting her range of income, because you're saying that it's a building owner can't provide parking within five hundred feet. That person has no parking.
Checking and honestly owning.
I'm just going by what's in the ordinance.
Uh, it's just not gonna work.
It seems to me that all of the existing ones aren't following the ordinance
Right.
right now, cause they don't have a dedicated one space for every dwelling.
They don't. They don't.
Um, the five hundred feet that you just read, where.
Nine down oh three B. Though someone.
Off-street parking. That's off-street, so if, if somebody were to park on the street in a public right of way, it doesn't have to be within five hundred feet.
So now down along the edge of her building in public, that's.
Three spots there.
That's allowed overnight parking.
Yes. And on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Same thing.
So again, I guess if we say that it's up to the landlord to explain the parking situation.
To advise the new tenant of potential parking areas.
I just, it should be in the rental, gotta be in the rental.
Yeah, probably parking right across the street.
Yes, you can park it.
I mean, it gives the, the person running some protection, if you say they have to be in there, if she doesn't do it, and they start complaining, then it gives them a way out of their lease if they really need, need to.
Yeah.
Do we wanna say that the pub, that the parking space needs to be within a certain distance?
I, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I don't.
I think you can, exactly, I think you can. Yeah.
Cause she'd have to own the spot to guarantee it.
Yeah.
Well, right, if they're, but I'm saying if they're dependent on, on street parking, you can't control it if you want every dwelling to have its own parking space.
There aren't enough spots.
There's just not.
Yeah, we don't wanna.
If you start putting a parking garage somewhere.
Even that, would the village ever um, designate parking spaces, you know, sell a.
Really, why, why, we can do it anyway, making money.
Sell a parking space to apartment dwelling, I mean.
Yeah, we're very bad. Then, then who's gonna monitor, you know, you call, please, they're in my parking spot.
Enforcement would be.
Well, probably, but you, you've got a sticker on it, and I mean, that would be easy to monitor, if you have a sticker to, you know, police walk by, see it, and there's, there's a
Yeah.
fine on it, you know.
Well, it really only becomes a problem, you know, if you sign it, um, re- yeah, resident parking owner or something like that, and then
Pretty much also. Or private, private parking, but.
If they come home and find somebody else's parking.
But then our businesses lose some of their parking.
The businesses are gonna be mad, you know, because they already complained about it, and if now we're selling spots, so, everybody,
Right, right.
hey, we need money for the roads, we really do, but that's probably not what it.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's an idea, it's not a solution, it was an idea to put it out there.
No. No.
No, I think just.
But it's not gonna get better though, that situation won't get better because you're gonna allow, what, four new dwellings in this
No. Right.
that have to park, so they're gonna be mad about that regardless.
Yeah.
So potentially you need more cars. I don't know, I, I don't know how, I know what the problem is, but I don't know how to fix it.
I mean, I don't care if they have apartments up there, but like it 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 does, you know.
Yeah, they have to have some place to park it, they can't take up the business parking.
To me, it comes down to what you wanna encourage, do you wanna, do you want to encourage as many units downtown as you can get so that you get people um, you know, frequenting businesses and things like that when they're home.
To me, that is a good idea, again, like we said.
See, that's that's the way I always think, is now you have more people going, using our businesses and stuff.
Right, but they're also using up our parking spots.
Depending on your.
Yeah, but.
Which, which every customer does.
Yeah. But at a limited time.
Right.
And you're even more restricted because those that are living there wanna park overnight somewhere, so that wakes up all downtowning.
Right. Right.
You could put time limits on some of the main parking areas, you know, if you.
We do, and of the very main section of town, is is.
Okay, so, so even these ones that the businesses are mad about today that are used by residential and would get used by this, these new units, you could add some time restrictions there. You know, during the hours of eight AM to eight PM, this is four hour parking, outside of that, you can park however long you want.
Actually, outside of that, you can't park at all. Can't park overnight.
Yeah, so resident, so so on parking, when they wanna park out front there anyways, cause they'd have to move their car anyways. So I mean, unless they're just running up to their apartment, they're not gonna park on Main Street.
Right, right, cause then they gotta run down once the time's up and move the car.
Yeah, get it, no, yeah.
So they're gonna, so what we're talking about is making all the apartments essentially fight for their on-street parking, which happens in downtown Chicago, it happens in downtown.
Everywhere.
Right, yeah, everywhere, that's why I say, I don't, I don't think the parking's gonna be an issue regardless, it's it's an issue now, it's always gonna be an issue, but I think that allowing the apartments.
Right, and which percentage more of an issue?
It's, but it's gonna happen regardless, that people are always fighting over where do I park, I don't.
Well, I'd just like to see that space used, and you're probably not gonna get a business on a second or third floor.
Right. I believe this particular business owner has tried that before, and with no success on the second floor.
Well, it wasn't, it hasn't been zoned for anything.
Okay.
Even when they built it, just was, the middle floor wasn't zoned for anything.
Well, I was gonna say, aside from API, I mean, there's also space behind Cozy.
Yes, we have parking lot behind Cozy, that's kinda small, but.
Is it public?
Yes.
Is it public parking?
Yeah, Billy Jones is.
Okay.
Bar does not.
Bit of a lot for this business, but.
Well, it's parking spaces, I mean.
Yeah.
Again, you choose a apartment, it's.
It's a lot. If you have to park out in Walmart's parking lot, get into the store, you're walking further than that.
Yeah.
Walking from the store.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
I like your idea of having a requirement that the parking arrangement has to be detailed in the rental or lease agreement.
I do, I think, I think that's an absolute necessity.
And that way.
Well, that way you know they knew it, and you have to enforce it.
Right, you do.
Right. Correct.
That arrangement might say you have one designated spot on this property, or it might say we have no available parking, all parking is on straight, on street, and you're on your own.
Yeah.
It's comfortable.
But it also has to be, they have to follow city ordinance or city regulation for parking, cause we have some our time limit parking. And so you can't be there overnight and expect that we're gonna go, oh, that's right, you own the apartment, yeah, oh.
Yeah. No.
Your tenant's responsible to park, you know, within city ordinances or whatever that wording is. As long as that's stated somewhere in the lease.
And like I said, tear down a couple buildings and put a parking garage up.
Well, don't build a building that covers white line to white line.
That's where it was.
That's how the village was set up.
You wrote, you owned from the front of the wall, the backside of the sidewalk to the backside of the side of the sidewalk. The backside of the east and in the back.
And you could have left room for.
Hmm, parking.
When that building was built.
When the building was approved, you should, we should do what?
You could have left a room for parking space.
That he just saw, these buildings though are probably built before everybody had.
The only question was not.
This was burned down.
Now I see where you're going.
Yeah, this one was burned down and.
You're right.
Yeah.
But those garages should have never been approved.
I'm like, my Delorean's in the shop, I'm sorry.
Those garages should never have been approved.
No.
People pull them out of that garage, go all the way up to the front seat of the, of the side of the car before you can see what's behind it, yeah.
You can see what's, yeah, yeah.
So.
No, I wasn't on the board then.
Okay, well, I can, I can certainly make these changes to that section, that's not a problem.
Okay, anybody got anything else in the changes or sections maybe that weren't covered? We can quickly go through this with Brian, anything? All right, Brian, Brian, you know, just get back to Becky, you know.
Yeah, I'll make these changes, I'll send them off to her and you can go from there.
Let us know. Okay, all right, so I think everybody's good with the review of the zoning ordinances, yes?
So we're officially done?
No, we are on reports.
Versus.
And we need, well, I need to mention in the reports that the minutes of the Novem-, oh, okay.
They will.
Because, yeah, we didn't actually specify that we weren't going to um do the motion on the meeting minutes of November?
November two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, we have to approve those in April because we don't have enough board members here that were present at that meeting in order to
So then.
make a legal motion and vote.
That is gonna be April then?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be in the April meeting, that's when Mike will be back.
Part April? Okay.
Yeah, cause you weren't here, I mean, it was just, it'd be me, Mike, and Kevin, right?
Right, and we have to have three. Okay, Kevin, you good?
Uh, yeah, actually, I was gonna say the same thing, so.
Brian, anything you need to add, thank you so much for being here.
I'm happy to.
Hey, if you hear anything from uh officials, we'll let you know.
Organized care.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, again, thank you so much for being here, Brian is also going to be here while we go over the master plan, which is worse than the ordinances. So, all right, if there's nothing else.
Uh, one thing real quick.
Yes.
Make sure I got the right thing here, nope, nope, right. Since we got this um SNCOG membership, has there been any thought given to approaching them, asking their input on this?
That I know of, no.
Because I was told that was one of the selling points, was we have access to all these three sources.
On the zoning ordinance?
Uh, master plan. Because when I was reviewing that part, I noticed that they were referencing a lot of external sources for all their tables and graphs and charts and projections. I figured, why just, why go eighty different places, just go to one spot and say, here, what can you help us with?
Yeah, with the internet's port.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, with the internet's port.
So is the dark web, but the thing is. No, I'd rather just do a, a one-stop, just to streamline the process, that's the bottom line.
Now that you've mentioned it, we're certainly able to end that as a viable option when we're ready to begin.
Okay.
So thank you for bringing it up. Do we have anything else? Since we're all packed up, can we have that?
You're the one that's packed up, I gotta.
Can we have that light emotion, please?
I make a motion to adjourn the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the village, working it up planning commission, time is nine twenty-one PM.
I swear you worded that perfectly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.